All right, seeing as 6:00 PM, I will call the December 7th study session of the Board of Education to order. If we could start with the pledges. How do you do?
Students of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation and we're God. We give this all for liberty and justice for all.
The Westerland Iroquois Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region, and that this school district building sits on the homelands of the Anindawaga Seneca of the Hodinisoni Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Johnson, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
We have no changes tonight, thank you.
Then may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Connor, he was first. Ms. Vargas-Cronin is second. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in pit. That is 6-0, Ms. Lustig. Next is the study session, and the study session tonight is the 4-6 principal presentation. So, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so we're excited tonight to be at Rogers Middle School. We have Mr. Henz with us, and Mr. Zwollan, and Mr. DiMartino here with us as well. And so this kicks off our series that is customary for the district to get around to our school buildings and just get updates on our programming, our services, and the state of the state across the district. So I know they're excited to provide this. I think it's going to be very engaging based on what I saw. So, Ms. Miga, anything to add to that before we kick it off? We turn it over to the principals.
Yeah, just, you know, obviously, as you've seen over the past few years, you've really been working hard towards that alignment, so across K through 12. So everything you saw presented at our focus area presentation, we hope you'll see some of that work coming to life. Our instructional blueprint and our strategic plan coming to life through our students, and the work that our fine 4-6 principals will present. So with that, I'll turn it over to them.
No pressure.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Rogers Middle School on behalf of the faculty, staff, the students, and the Iroquois principal.
He's delightful.
Thank you, Peter.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome.
I want to again thank everyone for being here tonight. It's my opportunity to not only showcase and brag a little bit about Rogers, but also, as Ms. Miga shared, to share with you a little bit about how we're working towards greater alignment between the 2-4 through 6 buildings. I have to acknowledge the folks that are here tonight. I want to thank all the board members, the parents, right? Also, I reflected fondly when the superintendent of schools introduced Mr. DiMartino, because a lucky I am to be standing between Rogers Middle School principals from the past and future. So it's really pretty cool. So, what a great opportunity for me, thank you all. And so tonight, Ms. Zwollan and I, we have done our very best to provide you with a lot of information. And we hope, in just a few moments, we go down and see our student friends, it'll be really engaging. But before that, we'll do a little bit of a warm welcome. Can you gauge that up a little bit with the technology machine?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
This is our agenda.
Okay, that's our agenda. And now, it's your chance to earn some really fabulous prizes. It's so exciting, I'm really excited. And it's going to give you the opportunity to bond with one, two, four, or six friends that you might not necessarily bond every day with. We're going to do an old-school game, quick round of rock-paper-scissors for some fabulous prizes. I know I've said that twice, but I just need to underscore that. You've probably played rock-paper-scissors very often as a child. Heck, maybe you still do with a significant other or your own children at home. You remember it's a one-two-three throw. You remember maybe that rock will crush scissors, smash, right? Yeah. That paper will cover the rock, that's what it does, right? And that the scissors will cut through paper. That's what we're going to do. We're not going to go there yet. So what I'm going to do, and this is how the game will go, we'll stand up. We'll pick the person next to us, and we're going to fire a round of rock-paper-scissors, right? As our warm welcome. And if you are not the winner, then you'll just sit down. And if you are the winner, you'll find the next winner. And then if you're not the winner of that pair, then you'll have a seat. And we'll keep doing that until we pick the grand prize winners. But like the Oprah Show, everyone's a winner at Rogers Middle School, as you know. So there will be some prizes for all. So with that, stand up, find a friend, humor the interim principal. This will be fun and engaging. And at the count of three, you're going to throw rock-paper-scissors. And when you complete, you can go with your.
Okay, do something.
You're going to go the best of three rounds, the best of three rounds.
Oh, the best of three.
Best of three, ready? On the count of one, on the count of two, ready? Begin, go! Rock-paper-scissors, shoot! Rock, best of three. Rock-paper-scissors, shoot, best of three. Rock-paper-scissors, shoot! If you're not the winner, have a seat, and then find the next person.
Where do we do that?
Take a seat, find the next person. And ready, we got paired up, paired up. Christian, get over there, stand.
Okay.
Thank you. We middle school principals, we pivot, we turn, we help out. All right, everyone's ready? Ready, and one, two, three, go! Best of three, best of three, best of three. Here we go, here we go, here we go. All right, if you're not the winner of this round, have a seat.
Oh, no!
If you're not the winner of this round, have a seat. If you are the lucky winner, come on up center with Mr. Henz. Mrs. Kramer, were you the lucky winner? Come on, oh my gosh, what was your name, lovey?
I'm Sam.
Oh, she's Sam. And, oh, come on up here, come on up here. This is where it gets a little hectic, because there's fabulous prizes to be won. Mo, you're going to be sitting out for this one, stand right there, don't go away. You ready? You're going to go at it.
Okay.
And the winner is going to take on Mrs. Kramer, and she's a little bit naughty sometimes. She's got some strategies working, right? Yep, she's always watching. At the count of three, we're going to do the best of three. And, one, two, ready, go!
Rock-paper-scissors, shoot. Rock-paper-scissors, shoot.
Let's give her a hand, let's give her a hand. Don't hurt too far, you got prizes. All right, now this is it, this is it. Wait, where are you going, Rosa? Come back up here, you're one of the finalists. You get the first of the prizes.
I'll stick around.
We're friends. It doesn't matter how this ends, we're still friends, right? We're neighbors, we're, oh yeah, let's go. Count to three, here we go. One, two, ready, and go!
Rock-paper-scissors, shoot. Oops, rock-paper-scissors, shoot.
And the winner is! Wait, you got the, you got the prizes, come here. You got the prize basket, you get a fidget. Listen, these are the hottest tickets in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. It's true! Right? These are fantastic! All right, how about a round of applause for our three finalists? And like I said, just like the Oprah Show, everyone gets a delightful fidget, so maybe not play with these during the presentation. Right, take one and pass one. Ms. Zwollan, you want to bring us down to the next topic, please?
Yes, sir, I will do my best. Going to transition into our essential questions, which are on... Are these in our, I refer you to our handout. Yeah, I don't know that we included these, but hopefully you can see them up here. These are, they come directly from our instructional blueprint, which in turn is anchored in the strategic plan. And these are how we, these are the same questions we come back to at our school-based planning team meetings, our faculty team, our faculty meetings, rather, throughout the year. And they're aligned and designed to create alignment across our buildings, but also from our buildings to the other buildings, K through 12. So this year, we're at those meetings, and the other learning that we're doing throughout the year, we're looking to answer these questions. How are we strengthening our systems and structures in order to ensure high expectations and access for all learners? How do we implement our K-12 instructional model in a way that directly impacts student achievement? How do we ensure the effective implementation of culturally responsive curricula and instructional practices? And how do we engage in strong problem-solving processes focused on the whole child? And our goal, too, will be to help you see evidence of that throughout the presentation tonight. That brings us to our learning targets for tonight, and these are in your materials packet. These are on the very first page of your packet. We present these just to kind of guide your thinking and learning and understanding tonight. These are our goals for our presentation. It's our hope that by the end of the presentation, you're able to do these two things. Identify evidence of the core elements of our strategic plan, those big rocks of curriculum, instruction, implementation systems, and well-being of self and community at work in both Rogers and Iroquois schools. And then, secondly, our hope is that you'll be able to reflect on and discuss that evidence with your colleagues. Also, on page one, you'll see an agenda, like a mini-agenda just for the presentation portion of tonight. And that is, I've got 6:10, so I think we might, I might skip right to the note catcher, if that's okay, Peter, and we'll get down to classrooms. So in your, at the back of your packet, you'll find these blue note catchers. And we ask that you use those to take some notes throughout the presentations tonight, both the student-teacher presentations that we're about to go down and see, but also in the presentations that Peter and I will follow up with. And then we'll ask that you use those notes to get at that second learning target, the reflection and discussion with colleagues part. And we'll also take, at a couple of points throughout the night, just give you a chance to process and discuss with your colleagues. So, for example, in just a couple of moments, we're going to transition down to those classrooms. And our intention is that you'll see lots of evidence of those curriculum and instruction rocks at play or at work, and in particular, the instructional model that you'll find on page three of your packet. And that's included there just for your reference. And with that, Peter, I'll defer to you to help us transition down to the classroom.
So folks, we're going to go down to the 4th grade wing. We arranged both demonstration classrooms side by side, so there'll be minimal planned loss to in transition. So what do you think, Ms. Zwollan, you head down there now?
Yeah, any questions before we move?
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Come on, we'll go this way.
So, start with number one. Read it out loud to your group. And then, you may go ahead and get started. You can solve on your white paper, you're going to keep them on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of on the floor.
What do we got?
What is the next thing? Yep, you should wear a word, one question, it says you have a question.
See?
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Five times four.
Just do that, so you can, in case.
Nope, you can each figure, you're going to keep track on your blue paper.
Okay.
Why don't you go write it on their paper? That way it'll be easier to keep track. All right, Lyndon, what do you got?
Fifteen.
Woo-hoo!
All right, welcome back, everybody. Thank you for joining us in our observation of students' teachers. I want to bring us back to the note catcher, and most importantly, perhaps, the instructional model, which again is on page three of your packets. And I just want to give you a couple of minutes to anchor your thinking back to that, and sort of use that as a guide to help you make some notes on here, especially around curriculum and instruction. What elements of the instructional model did you see at work during those presentations? And just, please, take a couple of minutes to jot down some ideas, and then we'll come back to these at the end of the presentation again to do some discussion. Maybe take one more minute to jot down your thoughts and ideas, please. All right, for this part of the presentation, Peter and I are going to kind of walk you through, walk and talk you through some artifacts. We have a video to share. And our goal will be to flesh out some examples of, in addition to curriculum instruction, what implementation systems work, and what work around well-being of self and community is happening at the 4th through 6th grade level. First, I want to come back a little bit to the curriculum instruction, some of which we just saw. If you look on page five of your materials packet, there's a couple of photos here that highlight the Ready Math curriculum implementation, some of which you just saw with Ms. Leonard and her students. I think what's really stood out to me around the implementation of this curriculum has been three things. Just a real high level of implementation, first and foremost. So, really thorough throughout almost all of our classrooms, a real deep implementation of the curriculum itself, which we're excited about on a lot of levels. One of which, however, that I want to point out is just what that does for equity and access. So we know we're anchoring ourselves to a curriculum that's really guaranteed and viable, that's happening for all kids in all classrooms, and we're really excited about that. So that's the implementation piece. Secondly, another thing that has really stood out to me, especially around the math, is its alignment to the instructional model. So, you know, it's a vendor product, which teachers are using and tweaking and refining. But as a standalone, you know, vendor product, it really aligns to the instructional model. And, thirdly, it really aligns to best practices. So what you see here on page five is a student in a classroom providing a worked exemplar or example of a strategy that he used to solve a math problem. And then the teacher engages, or really facilitates, students asking questions of that student. Just really a very student-driven curriculum. And there's also another best practice that really stands out, there's a lot of discourse. You can see this photograph on the bottom of, the bottom right-hand corner, rather, of page five. In the bottom right-hand corner of the workbook page that you see at the bottom right-hand corner of your materials packet, there's this little box that says "Discuss It." There's just a lot of opportunities for students to engage in discourse, which again is one of those research-based best practices that we know helps students to access math learning. And then another one is, in addition to the discourse, there's lots of reasoning and problem-solving that students do, and there's a lot of tasks where they have to show evidence of their thinking and their reasoning. And that's what you see in the bottom, excuse me, the top right-hand corner, again, from a Ready Math classroom student, sharing out her work and using that to help others learn. I'll also point you to pages 6 through 9 of your packet. And this is from the Core Knowledge Language Arts, or the CKLA, curriculum. You'll see some artifacts from there, and this was really highlighted in Mrs. Petronio and Mrs. Ventura's classroom. Students are doing a lot of writing. They're looking at models. This is another thing that stands out to me from that curriculum, is the high quality of the models. I know a lot of you had a chance to look at the texts that students were reading. And then they use that to provide direct instruction and then release kids to independent practice and application. So for example, you may have heard the girls talking tonight about specific strategies or writing strategies that they looked at in that anchor text as a model that they then applied to their own memoir pieces. And the curriculum also gives kids a lot of opportunities to engage in some of those culturally responsive best practices, one of which is this memoir writing. There's just a lot of opportunities for kids to show off, share, understand, and appreciate their, one another's identities. Whether that be, you know, lived experience, or, you know, aspects of their cultural identity, that's a big part of the curriculum as well. The next curriculum and instruction piece that I wanted to talk about, and that, for your reference, there's some photographs, a little description for you on page 10 in your packet. We've really worked hard this year to expand our special education continuum. And in particular, we've added an 811 classroom at both K-3 and 4-6 level. And these classrooms are really providing intensive social and emotional supports, community building, behavioral interventions, lots of real consistent rituals and routines that is improving the access for all our kids to academic achievement. These are some photographs from our 811 classroom at Iroquois School. So those pictures on the bottom, of those four pictures, the two pictures on the bottom, are students in the 811 classroom. And the bottom right-hand corner shows our whole crew, including our adult team. And then the pictures at the top are some of those same students integrated into the General Ed program. So students are pushing into specials, there's an art class going on there, they're pushing into lunch and recess, they're pushing into some content area classrooms as well. One thing we're really proud of and excited about is we've seen a marked increase in student attendance and engagement for students who are in that program this year and were in, last year, in an ICT, for example, or even a Gen Ed classroom. So we're really excited about that. And then, the last curriculum and instruction piece I wanted to highlight is noted on page 11. And this is a book that Chrissy turned us on to over the summer, Zaretta Hammond's Culture-Responsive Teaching and the Brain. And we've really, I'm going to show you a clip from a book study that teachers are engaging in in just a minute. And we're really using this book to, I think the thing that folks are most excited about is it's giving us some real discreet and concrete, applicable moves, pedagogical moves that teachers can make in the classroom to ensure that their instruction is indeed culturally responsive. The other thing that we're learning in this book is about this concept of cognitive redlining, this idea of limiting rigor or access to high-quality instruction for students. And we're learning ways that we can kind of mitigate cognitive redlining with moves that will help all of our students have access to rigor, to engagement. Zaretta Hammond, that's a big theme of hers throughout the book, is ensuring that all students have access to high levels of engagement and cognitive independence. Perhaps most of all. So I'm going to move on to this next slide, and Jake, thank you. Jake's going to help us to present this. And I just ask that you, as you watch this book study, you'll hear my voice, too. I'm trying to hold the phone here and take part in the book study at the same time. But just watch and listen for evidence of those things that I just went through, really. What we're learning through the book, and how we're using it to ensure that our instructional work really is culturally responsive.
The definition that she gave on page 15 of culturally responsive teaching. So, do I need to read the whole thing? Because I wanted, so the summary for me is that really what she's trying to say is that we need to connect with what students already know and how they know it, and then we also have to build relationships with them. So those seem to kind of like the two big components she's talking about.
Yeah, and I liked how in the, I agree, I agree with what you said. And I like, we can touch on that, and on the building relationships, especially in chapter two, when they talk about the culture, which is really big for building relationships, which that was a big aha for me.
And, sorry, I lost the camera. So, I mean, the reason was, like, I know, like, she's tied a lot to neuroscience, and I know that a big part of helping students learn is connecting to prior knowledge. So when she said that, it's like, oh, but she's really saying is you need to connect to prior knowledge. But she's just acknowledging that how kids have learned, the knowledge that they might have from home, might surprise us, it might be not what you're expecting, it might not be in the form that you're expecting, but we still have to connect to that in some way and honor it.
Yeah, I agree. I also think, for me, I've always said this during my stand-up project, is that it's not part of our curriculum in that there's a month you do it. I like that term, fluid intelligence. It's something that we're just doing. It's just a natural way, we're embedding it into our instruction. It's not something that someone should come in and say, oh, now I got to add this culturally responsive part to this part. It's not that. It's that we should just be doing this naturally, and I think we should have been doing it naturally for a very long time. And I'm happy that we're bringing more awareness to it.
Yeah, I agree. I like, like I said, the fluid intelligence, a concept, too. Making sure that, you know, culturally relevant teaching is not just doing something here and something there, it's really changing your whole mindset and your way of planning and thinking about different units of education, too. Anything else? One thing that I just really wanted... One thing that I just really wanted to point out for this chapter that I thought was very important is the difference between the dependent learner and the independent learner. If we look back, well, they do have a chart for it on chapter 14. But I also liked when they're talking about, we have to get, we have to change our dependent learners because when kids are dependent, they're not developing the neurological skills to be able to do the rigorous thinking, the higher-level thinking, the conceptual understanding that we need them to do to be successful. And I really think that we need to make sure that we are doing those parts in our classroom to make sure that we aren't creating and facilitating more dependence. And I think that sometimes we might do that without even realizing we're doing it, you know?
Kind of reminded me of the CKLA curriculum. When we had our PD back in October, the person that was presenting said that we really need to work on having the students doing the heavy lifting. Like, we really have to make sure we're not doing the heavy lifting of processing the text and reading the text. And so in the chart, it says, "For the independent learner relies on the teacher to carry some of the cognitive load temporarily." And so I feel like that's been, kind of jives with what I'm trying out in the curriculum of like, oh, my gosh, this curriculum or this text is very complex for them, but how can I make sure that they're the ones doing the heavy lift of the thinking, but supporting them occasionally?
I have a thought on that too, which is that, so the section that I highlighted was, oh, on page 13, where she talks about, it's right in the middle of the page, she talks about read by third grade campaigns. And we say, "Children are learning to read up until third grade and then shift to reading to learn." And that's something that we've worked to address in the district is making sure that we're providing instruction beyond third grade to continue some of that foundational reading instruction. And then she goes on to say, "The same is true with cognition. In the early grades, we teach children habits of mind and help them build cognitive processes and structures so that as they move through school, they're able to do complex thinking and independent learning." So that just made me think too, like, I have to remember to that, gosh, I don't know, sometimes do direct instruction, I guess, is what I'm thinking, on how to think and how to access, you know, these tasks or concepts that might be higher cognitive load and making sure that all kids have access to it and that they're able to do more and more of that lifting, as Brian noted. Anyway, I hadn't, I don't know, that was a new thinking for me and something that, I don't know, I just continue to think about, like, how do we support kids to make sure that everybody has access to that rich, rigorous thinking or cognition, as she calls it?
Well, and what I like about what you said is that that's a skill that we can take back to our classrooms. Like, that's something that we can really now take and implement in our instruction, like, from, I mean, from this book study. How do I model that thinking? Or how can I put in that modeling of thinking before I give kids? You know what I mean? Like, a highly cognitive, you know, higher-level cognitive task to set all the students up for success and create that equitability.
Yeah, and just like remembering to make that move in the classroom and not just the way we would, like, with a reading piece. That was really interesting to me.
Not removing it just for students who we deem to be ready for it or deemed to have the capacity, because really what she's saying is that it's when we short-change the students who we assume can't do it or they're not ready for it, then basically they often never get the opportunity.
Thanks, Jake. Sorry it wasn't a little bit louder. And I'll just paint a picture for you, kind of what the book study looks like. This group of teachers comes together once a month, talks about the couple of chapters that they read since the last month and what practices they're implementing in their classrooms, bounce ideas off one another, and then kind of continue to cycle through that as we work through the book. I'm going to hand it over to Pete, oops, excuse me, to Peter again, who's going to walk and talk us through some of these implementation systems pieces.
Thanks so much, Christian. And I just, I want to add too, what a pleasure it's been working alongside Christian to prepare tonight's presentation and to really talk about how to align the instructional approach to both middle schools. Christian makes it look so easy and so natural as an experienced principal working alongside of them. And so thank you for that inspiration. And certainly, Ms. Miga, who helped frame this work for me, again, as a relative newcomer to Westeranicoi, and to talk about how things anchor right back to the instructional model. And one of the things that I caught quite naturally, as I sat here listening to my colleague, is the language that he used to describe the curriculum and instructional pieces that are going on in 4-6, 4 through 6 buildings. It came right out of this, and it's natural for him. So Christian, thank you for that. And thank you for all your sage advice over these past months that I've been part of the community.
Thank you.
It's absolutely lovely. And so we talked a little bit about systems, and I reflect back to a board of education meeting where we all got to sit down and have a meal together. And all of the administrators got to get up and talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that, you know, were spotlighting for the year. And I was actually the one that spoke a little bit about those systems that were moving toward a greater alignment, K through 12. And those are the instructional support team models and those pupil support team models. And we're looking at how the approach is the same and where it could be a little bit closer aligned in each of the buildings, especially when there's so many elementary schools, right? And it's important to align practice and thinking. And I think it talks a little bit more about that access, right? And everyone having those same opportunities. So the conversation is going to be the same. And I got to take part into, with all the other principals, again, with Kelly Santora and the delightful Chrissy, where we talked with all the administrators together around instructional support team processes and protocols. And it was a wonderful share session because it wasn't just principals that were part of that dialogue, but it was also some key players, mental health players or members of the SCS teams from each of the building, that got to share out their practices. And so that conversation, those conversations are going to continue fall, mid-year, and late spring, I believe, correct? You'll send me your postcard?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So again, it speaks volumes to that bigger picture of the big rocks of the systems and how we're working towards creating a greater sense of alignment.
This one's you two, I think.
What? Okay, cool. And so one of the things that I've learned is through the observation and evaluation process, and God bless Michelle Kramer, because she has to entertain telephone calls, emails, and text messages from the interim principal multiple times a day. And one of the things that I appreciate, again, and many of you know my story of having been a retired elementary principal and doing some interim work here and there for 25 years now, it looks a little bit different wherever you go, whatever school district where you find yourself. What I love this about this system and this practice is the really, the rich conversation that happens between the evaluator or the observer and the teacher or related service provider. There's rich questions that really drive a post-observation conference, and they're all anchored towards teachers' professional goals. And that's something that's quite unique and that really should be underscored more in Westeranicoi. Because as I find myself now working through the observation process of both tenured and non-tenured teachers, a big part of the conversation is bringing back the goals that they established back in September and early October. So that they're not just put on a shelf or in a digital file, but they're relevant, right? And they're used. And we anchor back to, how is what you're doing in the best interest of children? And how does it reflect that instructional model? And I have those charts right on top of my desk in a poster right across from where the teacher, when they're meeting with me and they're going over their observation, it's smacking them in the face. And I'll just say, so, tell me about this. What did I just see? And it's easy for them, and it's natural. So that's, again, that's a huge, I believe, jewel in the Westeranicoi crown.
And I'll just add, what you'll see on pages 13, 14, and 15. In your packets are some examples of both goal sheets that teachers put together in the fall as the year starts, and also a copy of a feedback conference form. And if you look at those closely, you'll see that with these teachers, as with a lot of teachers in the buildings, they're focused on setting goals around their implementation of the instructional model. And in most cases, at this point, refinement of it. So, okay, last year was my, you know, first go-around using the model regularly. Was a piece of it that I want to work on this year to make it even more effective. So for example, a lot of teachers chose to focus on the closing this year as an area where they, an area of the model that they wanted to improve their practice around. So those artifacts are there for your reference too. And the last couple of pieces are around well-being of self and community. So I'll point you to page 16 in your packet. Both Rogers and Iroquois put together school discipline data action plans this year. Based on some of our suspension data last year, we identified that one of the problems of practice that we're seeing is that we're not delivering enough Tier 1, 2, and 3 social emotional supports, and that as a result, students are not having access, the kind of access to instruction that we want them to have, because they're dealing and we're dealing with social emotional struggles, which can internally lead to suspension. And so you see there on page 16, some of the steps that we have put in place this year. A lot of it is learning that we're doing together at faculty meetings to learn and put into practice some of those Tier 1 strategies, Tier 1 social emotional strategies. One in particular that I wanted to highlight here is the use of zones of regulation. And this is a strategy that had been used a lot by our service providers at like a tier three level, if you will. So our counselors, our social workers, our school psychologists. It was language and strategies that they were using a lot with students in their offices. And so one of our goals this year was to kind of break that out of those offices and get them into classrooms. And those folks did a great job of leading, learning for their colleagues at faculty meetings. And in turn, we've seen a lot of it just come alive throughout the building, and it's made a big impact. What you see here at the bottom are two artifacts, one, a classroom bulletin board. It just shows that Tier 1 implementation, it's language and strategies that kids and teachers are using in those Tier 1 classrooms. But then also, in the bottom right-hand corner, it's something that our teachers throughout the program have picked up and run with. So this, for example, is from a band rehearsal that I was in the other morning. And the teacher, I don't know if you can quite see the colors, the teacher had green, yellow, red, and blue paper clips. And those correspond to this strategy where students self-monitor their own emotional states. And there was, before they even started the rehearsal, she asked for students to identify what zone they were in and just kind of quietly put a paper clip up at the top of their music sheet folder. And it was just a way for her to kind of know where kids are at, a way for them to practice, again, that self-regulation. And then she was able to follow up with kids accordingly. And then one last piece is, these are things you'll see at both Iroquois and Rogers, these calming and energizing stations. Our OT and PT service providers, again, this is a piece that's kind of broke out of Tier 3 and really tried to implement throughout the program. So our OT and PT teams shared these strategies building-wide. They're implementing calming and energizing stations that we've seen our 811 students and staff take advantage of, our students who are receiving OT and PT services, of course. But we're also seeing our Gen Ed, our Tier 1 classrooms, our PE classrooms are using them. And they're just stations throughout the building. This one in the upper right-hand corner is called an infinity walk. And there's a little chart that's been anchored to the wall that walks students and adults alike on how to use that as a way to either calm or create some calm or create some energy for yourself, depending on what you need. I think you need the calming and I might need the energizing.
Wow. And as I know, the word is running out of time, right? I have to tell you about the calming piece, you know? It was very strategic, Christian and I, when we planned tonight, that we started that warm welcome with one of the games, and it was rock, paper, scissors that came out of our Caring School Communities series. The teachers are starting to unpack as part of one of the supports, right, for kids for that social emotional piece. And the other piece is, you know, and I have to shout out for Mr. Brennan because he's always flabbergasted at how I spend district resources. And so, and he entertains me and, you know, and what I find fascinating though, like you said with the calming strategies, right? You know, I gave out all those fabulous gifts tonight, you know, the fidgets. And as we're presenting up here tonight, Christian and I am just looking at some nameless board of education members just tearing their fidget pieces apart. And they're very calm. They're very happy. And I think the two people that are really tearing them apart would be the Assistant Superintendents for Instruction and Finance. Tearing them apart! So I'm glad that the strategies that we're using for middle school students translates to some of our senior leaders, instructional leaders, right? And also our board trustees. So thank you, and thank you again, Christian.
Yeah, one last thing I want to add about, forgot to mention this, around the, oh, some of those SEL strategies, we're tracking their, how, most importantly, how they impact our students by looking at suspension and referral data across the building, but also in subgroups. And we're seeing a marked decrease in both of those numbers, which we're really excited about and proud of. We're a little over time. So I'm thinking we'll wrap by just giving you maybe three minutes to not only add a couple more notes to your note catchers, but also ask you to turn to an elbow partner and discuss what you saw in kind of some small group conversation. And then we'll close by asking you to share with whole group and also throw some questions at us if you have them. So maybe three minutes to talk in small groups, and then we'll come back together Let's see, one more minute, please. And we'll close just by asking you to share with us what stood out to you. I think it's really helpful for I think it's really helpful for Peter and Nick and myself to understand, you know, what really stood out to you, but also to give you a chance to ask questions.
So Matt and I were just discussing in curriculum instruction, the personal narrative nature of the writing assignment, really had the students invested in what they were doing. We saw those feedback mechanisms, whether that be in the way that the drafts were organized, the student that I was working with showed me all the comments in her Google Doc from the teacher and how she had implemented those suggestions. So it was really amazing and she had written six or seven pages for this one assignment. She told me 753 words, so.
Word count's important for a middle school, right? That's a huge, yeah. Thank you for sharing that.
I agree with what was just said, that when the topic is engaging, it makes it just so much more, and meaningful, it makes it so much easier to write. And those planning pages of how it helped them organize their thoughts and chunk out the sections of their writing piece was just, like when I was asking the little girl that, you know, that I was initially speaking with, she said that it was just so helpful to have that organization and it made it really easy and a fun way to like get her thoughts out on that paper.
In addition to the planning pages, I saw the folders, like the four-section folders that had, you know, the first folder was basically their general ideas and then like a first draft and edits and so it really gave the, gave the student like an organizational focus to each step of the process, which I thought was fantastic.
Me, too, because it can be overwhelming. And so to be able to have those, those resources in place to help keep it organized on track, I think was really nice.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to note and thank Chrissy and Kim and Orlando, just for leading the way on those curriculum pieces, it's been really powerful for our kids, so.
So to add to that is just like in the math room, we saw just the different strategies that kids had. I watched like three or four different kids and each one of them got this right answer and got there fairly quickly, but they all used a different method and it was what worked for them and the teacher walking around knew each student and knew the method that worked for them. You know what I mean? And that's important is, you know, we always get to think of, you know, take out your notebook and you, you know, you had the charts when we went to school, you had your timetable. So it's good to see that kids can learn in their own environment and what works for them, you know, and they're engaged. And the second thing is just in this feedback that you gave us in the book here, it's great to see the thoughtfulness that goes into the reflection to our staff. I know that that's important to them and then their thoughts of them really taking the, to heart the comments that are made from their supervisors and how they can, like they can make themselves better, which are going to help our students. So I think that's a very important piece that a lot of parents and students don't really see, but it's really an effective part of what makes West Iroquois, West Iroquois is that model that was growing with both WITA and the district for that instructional feedback model for our, for our staff, too. And I just want to say thank you to both of you that in the community, I hear great things about both Rogers and Iroquois and kids are happy and parents are excited, so, you know, you guys are doing a great job leading the ship, so.
Thanks, yeah, that means a lot. And I want to thank you just for what you saw. As an English teacher, once upon a time, myself, the things that constantly amazed me and impressed me with the math is how the children's different strategies are individually, they're validated, so no, and then differentiated, right? So no one really has a wrong way of doing things. And I think what you saw tonight and what you see here, just they're so excited to show you how they got to the final answer, whether it's a whiteboard, whether it's a...
It's so fun, seriously, it's so fun and interactive and engaging and...
That's the big piece.
Just the application of technology and, you know, both, you know, the reading and, you know, math, like I think it's amazing.
Cool, thank you.
The whiteboard tables, the chairs, I mean everything.
Right, that's for, yeah.
Are those chairs part of the flexible learning spaces?
Yeah, I just definitely put down how student-centered everything is, you know, from instruction to the seating, you know, it's all very student-centered and...
They're great learning spaces. They're really great for, especially when the children transition from the elementary schools into those fourth grade spaces. Anything else, Mr. Z? I don't want to take up too much time. Overstair welcome. The doctor's got things to talk about.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, everyone.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen and Mr. Hens, you're always welcome to take up as much time as you would like. At our next meeting. Also, thank you to all of the students and parents who came out tonight to show us their hard work and our staff that were here as well. So it's always such a great experience. These are my favorite meetings of the year to get to interact with our staff and our students and see what they're up to. Next on the agenda, back to the agenda, is a review of the minutes. This is a first review, so we anticipate approving these at our December 21st meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes, please reach out to Mrs. Lustig. Next is public comment. I don't believe anyone is signed up for public comment. If you are, just say so. Okay, because I saw the list earlier, I don't have it in front of me, but it doesn't seem like anyone is. We do always welcome public at our Board of Education meetings and we will have public comment at each one of those. And next is the report of the superintendent, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Metris. I'll just start out, I want to thank again Mr. Zwallin and Mr. Hens and really just the staff combined across the two buildings. You know, we were talking about that during the processing and I think what, you know, everything today really jumped off the page for me, but it really made me consider the work that everyone's been a part of and really rolled up their sleeves doing over the past three or four years. And the way that we committed to those things that we identified together as a community through the strategic plan, right? And I think with that, we talked about, you know, the feelings that we're having as everything's starting to come together. We got the curriculum that we worked very hard to identify, did a great job of screening some tools. There were some hardships to that, but we've worked through those together. We've identified things like these, you know, the flexible seating, you know, the board has made a commitment financially to support that. It was really pleasing today for us all to experience that and really see the direct impact in our students. I can remember, really it was at Iroquois where I, was the first time where I saw these zones of regulation popping up in our SES team and to see that spread across the district in a way, again, that's supporting our students' level of independence. And I think that was another thing that jumped out to me today, working with those fourth graders, you know, that's really a gateway moving forward with their literacy. And they all wrote at least four pages. Now, I don't know about you, but I cannot recall writing four pages in seventh grade. So for them to do that in fourth grade was really, you know, blowing my doors off. And then to have them kind of describe those strategies that were identified by the board was really cool. So, and then the math, I was sitting with a student who hit a roadblock in one of the problems, but then she turned, tried another strategy, and got it. And so that's what it's all about, right? As learners, sometimes it's divergent. And I think that that's something, again, that's really special for the district, is we're helping them to identify, build that sense of independence, but also that sense of agency. So I just think it's a job well done and I'll make sure that I follow up with the staff and write some letters and whatnot, but I just want to say thank you again. All right, so with that, we're going to start in almost a self-evident question, how are all the children? Well, based on tonight and what we saw, I would say the children are well, but a few other things that I want to add. Again, I would start in the upper left-hand corner. I've had the pleasure of getting around to the buildings and one of the things that I like to do is just get in there and chat it up with folks and chat it up with the food service and eat. I was telling Mrs. Lustig that I went to the high school today for lunch, they gave me about fifteen mozzarella sticks. I said, when they loaded it up, I said, there's no way I'm going to eat that, but I did. But anyways, I just want to send a shout out to our food service workers. Here's one of our members at, right here at Rogers, so I just want to thank them for what they're, they're doing and hearing really great responses from our children directly on the universal meals. I mean, the first day I had one student look at me, she's like, is it true? Do I really get lunch for free today? Absolutely. So I just wanted to, again, thank the board for all the advocacy that went into that, for Mr. Brennan for tracking down and completing the approval process that we had to go through. I also see up there, I think to the right is actually Mrs. Godfrey's class. I pointed that out because they're working on some CKLA, I think, out there. But again, there's a tie to that, not only to the curriculum, but we've been very thoughtful as a district over time to create the right atmosphere. So we've talked about the use of the hallways as a learning space, so it's nice to see them taking advantage of that to kind of, you know, find their place where they learn best, like we saw with the seating tonight. Below that is a group of students, and I think this is really cool because it was MCC that came in for a career series and I think as a district, we really stand out in the county for the, our commitment to CTE. And so here was an opportunity for our students working through our College and Career Center to explore career pathways like computer science and IT, industry, culinary, nursing, and a lot of other ideas there. And I think at one point this week, Mr. Connors, you were also incorrect, working with some of our students around some career pathways. So takes a village and I just want to appreciate the balance in that as well. So we're helping our students to see all of the opportunities that they can pursue and make, help them to make the best choice for them. And then below that is the library right here at Southland Rogers. And I'm proud to say I've been in here a few times and I love that things have really settled in. We've had some turnover and staffing, but as you can see there and you can probably feel it today, it's definitely a warm and welcoming space that is highly utilized by all the students here. And we're excited to take that next step with the RISE project, so. Couple of updates from across the district, I'll start with safety and security. So again, we continue to keep that as our highest priority here in the district, doing a lot of work. And so just, I think we mentioned it before, to keep it on the radar with the School Violence Prevention Grant that we were working with the IPD on and the other schools in Iroquois. On Monday, we have a functional exercise, it's a pretty big deal, we've been working up to this, so in essence, our highest level emergency managers will be in a room, kind of in a fishbowl with other people, emergency responders and some of our staff in other rooms, putting us through the paces as if it was a real emergency and how we would react. So I'm going to do a lot of studying over the weekend, eat my Wheaties and get a good night's rest, right, James?
Yes.
And then we'll be on the hot seat on Monday. But it's experiences like that, they're going to continue to keep us on our toes and be best prepared if and when these emergencies arise. The other thing I just want to celebrate is the threat assessment process. I mentioned it a lot because I'm very proud of our staff for that. Just this week, we've engaged in that in different venues and it's a great way just to bring people together, not only to analyze what's on the table, but to, most importantly, consider the interventions and the plan that we'll carry forward. So I just wanted to make the board aware that that continues to progress. District transportation, I had a question from a board member about this and so I felt like I sent out some information, but I think it's good for the community, too. So needless to say, people are getting a lot of text messages, there's been disruptions to transportation, some recently around weather, but mostly around illness and absenteeism with our drivers and some extended vacant, some vacancies that were protracted and extended that we didn't expect to be extended. So number one, I want to call it the leadership, Kathy Blair and Dave Williams up there, Dave's our new head bus driver that we had approved some time back, they're doing a great job. Despite the disruptions, I continue to get complimentary emails from parents about the way that they receive those, listening, talking with families through that. And they've been really flexible in their thinking. I put communication in there because we've all worked together and one of the things that we've identified is some of the runs that we know will be disrupted. So for example, we've had a driver out of bereavement. So we know for that period of time, there's going to be a substitute and it may be difficult to fill that day-to-day. So let's know, let's let parents know proactively the night before so that they can plan for that. The other consideration that we're working on is, you know, at some point, parents have to get their children to school, so what does that look like? So for example, today, working with Ms. Blair, we knew that a bus was significantly late. There's disruptions in the chain of communication from the dispatchers to us for all the reasons I just listed. So when we learned of that and there wasn't a clear replacement yet, we informed parents, hey, we're going to let the building principal know and if you need to drop your child off early, you can and they will be taken inside and supervised. So some things like that that we want to make sure that we continue to work on. I also want to just alert the board that, you know, we've obviously started the planning for our January workshop, so I don't know if the team would agree, but I think we've settled on the aim, the Budget Blitz. So we have one coming up later this month where the four of us will bring together the information that we've kind of culled from across the district, sitting down and preparing for that conversation with you. And so high on that radar is going to be the grant, the federal grant-supported positions that you've identified a pot of money for us to work within moving forward. So Chrissy has done a nice job of offering our principals and directors a template to work with their folks to just assess the impact and the, the, kind of the efficacy of those positions, to give that, rate that, and then we'll come back for that conversation, so. And then last but not least, we have a special election on Tuesday, just a reminder about that, so four candidates, it will be at district office. I heard there's going to be donuts for the people that work, but not for the people that vote, so. So just a reminder about that. And we'll be working in district office, once the person is identified, to do the traditional onboarding process and whatnot with that, so that we can expedite that and then I'll work with board officers on whether we want to do a retreat, okay? So any questions or comments?
Next is reported leadership staff business, Dr. Johnson.
Mr. Brennan, do we have a report?
Not a report, just a reminder that before our next meeting, on the 21st, there is an audit coming at six o'clock. And we will Jim Buffum from EFBR to decide what we're going to do for our internal audit for the year. That's it.
Sorry, what time is that, James?
Six o'clock.
It's not on my calendar, so I'll make sure it is. Next is reported leadership staff instruction, Dr. Johnson.
And we do have a report here, so I want to turn it over to Ms. Miga to provide those instructional updates.
Thanks, everybody. And just want to, before I get going, again, recognize our four-six principal team and all the staff that Dr. Johnson mentioned that support the buildings on a daily basis, but obviously participate in their presentation as well. So today I have a couple items just to provide updates on, and I'm going to start with something that I find very exciting and just want to put it on your calendars to mark the date because I know if you have an open Thursday, you want to fill it immediately. So as you know, over the past couple of years, we have been engaging in our Dr. Hunter cohorts, which have culminated in some of our students attending a youth voices conference at Buffalo State. Or last year, our elementary students went to Maryvale School District in Buffalo as well. And so it's kind of since we started this a couple of years ago, it's been a little bit of a dream to bring this to the Rochester area and so that our students obviously would have better access. have better access. And so working in partnership with Dr. Javon Hunter, East Rochester Central School District, who has also been working really closely with Dr. Hunter, and they're a great partner with us in this work. And so they also have a group of teachers who have engaged in this work as well. And then an old friend, Dr. Meg Calhan-Stekly at Nazareth College. Oh, it's not college anymore. My mistake, I apologize.
We won't tell Meg.
Yeah, that's right. We are going to hold on May 2nd, our own youth conference, and we are trying to start reasonably for the first year. So it's just our students and students from East Rochester. But we are going to, with the help and connections of Meg, hold it at Nazareth University on May 2nd. The time is subject to change, that's when we have it reserved for right now. So an after-school event for our students to present their critical inquiry projects, which they work, you know, started as kind of worked, were isolated, are isolated projects that the teachers who were only in the cohort completed. Those have since been built into our curriculum. So certainly students that might participate may have been, you know, students who their teacher participated in this cohort, or it may be, you know, somebody who is just doing and implementing our curriculum and has young leaders who would like to, you know, share their voice. So we're working on many of the logistics right now, so more to come, but just wanted to put it on everybody's radar as a really exciting opportunity for our students and, you know, and just a remembrance of our very first time we went when they got to go in the charter bus, and the kids were really excited. So we don't have a charter bus this time, but we are really, because it's local, but we're really excited to have it here on our own home ground. So very excited about all the potential opportunities that comes for students. I happened to see two 4th grade, who, students who are 4th graders now, they were 2nd grade when we went on this trip. I saw them in their 4th grade classroom, and they ran up, they gave me a big hug, and they were like, we love that trip, and we're going to Buff State, and we're, you know, and just so, just that connection alone of seeing themselves on a college or university campus, I think is well worth it. So just excited to share that news. And thanks to all of the partners mentioned. And so I also wanted to just provide a little bit of additional information and updates towards the graduation measures report that we talked a little bit about last time, and I believe Dr. Johnson had shared, but it's in your board docs materials again, if you need it. Just on, so I wanted to bring out some of the highlights of this report in particular. A lot is still in flux, so this is the initial report. You know, there's a lot of work that would have to be done through the Board of Regents, you know, across the state for some of these pieces to be put in place. But as this was in direct alignment to our strategic plan and helping to define what is a West Aronacote grad, what are the qualities that we want them to have, I thought this was really pertinent for us to just take a quick look at. So I'm going to do my best to summarize this document for you so that you can have a little cheat sheet through this presentation of what's included. But the Blue Ribbon Commission, which again is a group of representatives across New York State, various stakeholders, of course, there was four priority areas that came from this report. First, multiple pathways leading to one high school diploma, where we currently have three options for a high school diploma. Assessment flexibility, so a lot around project-based assessment and learning is a focus that you would see throughout this document and some of the work that they're doing. You'll see some of that. We've, I believe in the past, mentioned the Plan Pilot, where New York State is looking for districts to apply to, to really provide, or excuse me, to receive professional development and learning around project-based assessments in particular from New York State, and work to create different assessments at various courses and grade levels. The next priority area is meaningful life-ready credentials. So a very heavy emphasis on obviously life skills, but also career and technical education, and what that looks like and means. It also has a very heavy emphasis on financial literacy as a potential diploma requirement to come. And the last priority area, which is certainly nothing new to us or to New York State with their New York State culturally responsive and sustaining framework, but their fourth priority area is that continued focus on culturally responsive curriculum instruction and assessment. So as part of this, as well, this packet or report, they did release a draft. So keep in mind, all of this is sort of in draft form now, but they did release a draft of what they felt was a portrait of a New York State graduate. So this was great, because in a moment, we'll come back to this, and I'll show how this is aligned to the work that we already had going on at the 712 level in particular. But you can see a lot of those four priority areas, you can see the qualities that they selected really support those four focus areas that they identified. And then another very interesting part of this was the recommendations that this Blue Ribbon Commission, so again, representative stakeholders from across the state made recommendations. So how are we going to move closer towards this, and having that be what our graduates look like, and those are the qualities that they have? So these were the major recommendations that come that will obviously have implications on the work that we do as a district and across New York State. So the first two boxes are, you know, related. So like I said, they're looking to replace those three diploma types with one, so everybody would get one New York State diploma is the idea. But then they would heavily emphasize the seals that they have started to roll out. I feel we are in a very good place in this department, being as we've taken on both the seal of civic readiness by literacy, and there was also a business CTE one that we recently got as well. But those seals seem to be something that will be very important with diplomas moving forward. And then again, they spoke when we're talking about what is the requirements for those diplomas, these were the areas that they felt should be requirements of diplomas moving forward. So civic responsibility, cultural competence, again, you see that financial literacy being a big piece, fine and performing arts. STEM was, you know, we obviously call STEAM in district, the STEM was heavily emphasized throughout this report. And then writing skills for real-world scenarios. And I pulled out that verbiage because I do feel like there's just such a heavy emphasis on shifting the diploma credits to just really real-world skills for students when they leave. And you can definitely feel the shift from a heavy college emphasis of the past to college and career, where we've been using that term for a long time, but you can really feel it and see it with the recommendations of this report. So again, access, another recommendation was the access to career and technical education, and that emphasis on providing internships and work-based learning. So again, shift to bits of the career. This one, I was like, yeah, like go us, we're ahead of the game here, because they actually recommend that you shift to organized credit requirements. So they literally said like STEM and humanities. So, you know, we've already made that shift overall towards STEAM and humanities. I already mentioned, but they want to take a close look at assessment requirements. So how can there be a variety of assessments that help to achieve a diploma versus, right now, we have the Regents assessments? Now, I feel like that comes with an important caveat, though, that does not mean for right now, I would say for at least a few years, that the Regents are going away. So I feel like with the information they provided with the Plan Pilot information, that it was, those are, that, there would have to be some great movement before those would go away, as they say, or be replaced with another assessment. So this is a multi-year recommendation and plan. So Regents are here, and for right now, not going anywhere. Another interesting part of the report that again, you can kind of get into more, but they definitely seem to recommend more flexibility and options for specific students. So this had some to do with waivers, it had some to do with, you know, if a student has experienced trauma during the time of a Regents assessment, like what could the waiver or be for that? So that's something that, right now, it's a recommendation, but we would really have to understand what they mean by that and learn over time what that looks like. But so they have some specific options in there. And then the last part of it really focused on learning standards, so continuing to just make sure that the New York State standards are updated. And then there's a piece that specifically speaks towards teacher education, so that's obviously education for colleges and universities, as far as what teachers should be prepared in as part of their preparatory programs. So that's kind of the big recommendations from this document, and you just continue to see a lot of those overlapping themes. And so how does this relate to the work that we're doing in district? And so we have, as part of our strategic plan and this year's management plan, a focus on, one of our goals was to create our own kind of list of qualities or indicators of a West Aronacote graduate. And so before this was released in November, I attended and co-facilitated the cabinet meetings across both BAC and the high school. And we dug into a lot of different resources, including Lou DeCesar presented from his work that he's done with the Department of Labor. We looked at different AI presentations that have been given across the state. We just, we looked at some of the Blue Ribbon Committee work that had been done, and with that goal of defining the essential qualities and outcomes for a West Aronacote school graduate. And so this kind of describes, just a couple of slides from there, so we looked at the Teacher Ambassador Program presentation, we broke into groups, did a jigsaw of all of the different research and materials that we were able to dig through. And from that, and then we actually, we cheated a little bit, we used ChatGPT to give us an initial kind of idea of what is like a New York State graduate and those qualities, and then we went through and revised it based on all of the research and materials that we had. And then all of that work was synthesized together, and we came up with a draft. So it was very much in draft form, but a draft portrait of a West Aronacote graduate. And so we did, we initially had some different indicators that we had identified, but we made sure that this draft is now aligned to the indicators that are the portrait of the New York State graduate. So we're not, you know, working in a different direction than New York State, obviously. So this kind of, we wanted to further define what that meant, right? So to be literate across the content areas, what does that really mean? To, you know, have effective, be an effective communicator, what does that mean? So it goes through those different pieces of the visual that you saw, and Troy and Alicia are going to bring, are going to bring this draft back to the cabinets, and then also to the entire 712 faculty to take a look and provide some input on. So that's work that's continuing to go on. But obviously, all of this information is going to really help to drive our work as we continue to look at our courses, our offerings, you know, what we have in place across the district to support our students will obviously want to start to align towards this, not only our vision of a graduate, but New York State's as well. So any questions or comments?
Thanks for the presentation. So I just want to make, so the Blue Ribbon Commission and whatever, they're going to make recommendations to the Regents.
Yes.
And then the Regents will set the standard for the New York State diploma.
Yes.
And there'll be different pathways, it sounds like, and
Yes.
Different subjects that could be included.
Yes. But that all lead to one diploma instead of diplomas, yep.
So when they do that, that's the, I'll call that the floor. Is individual districts allowed to look at that and say, well, we think that's great, but we also, and I know it's going to be part of it, but we think that every student that graduates should take personal finance? Or I'm just picking a class, you know, can a district do that, like a board say? Because I know, I think about when Aaron does graduation, he says, you know, you've met the requirements of the Board of Education in the state of New York, you know, something along those lines you say, you know what I mean? And I'm just wondering, like, yeah, that's the, I'll call it the floor, but do local boards of education have a chance to look at that and say, you know what, we really think for our students, and I'll just use a class or something like that, is important that we should have every student take it, and then we as a board have to make sure that we are flexible in how we give that, because we don't want to have a kid maybe miss an elective because we're saying you have to take a required course for graduation. So I'm just wondering how that might look? And then when would possibly a local board make a decision on like when that would be or how they would go about that? I don't need the answer tonight, but those are kind of the things I wonder about.
Can respond to that. So currently, districts have that ability to, if you will, customize the requirements and extend those, and some districts have. Whether or not that would be extended within the framework of this recommendation, I don't remember seeing that specifically, but
What if financial literacy is?
Well, no, I mean, so if, once they, once they set their pathways, can the local boards amend those or change those as they currently can? So we, we don't know that yet. We can now, and there are some districts that do, but it, to your point, one thing to be conscious of as a district is how that will, what are, what are some of the direct consequences, the intended consequences, and then what are the unintended, unintended consequences that you must consider to do that effectively and support all students?
And it's not something you can just decide that, hey, this, we're going to do this next year, right? This is like a long-term plan, because you've got to have the on-ramp. You can't just go to the seniors this year, hey, by the way, you
Right.
You have to take this class, too. You know what I mean? Like, I don't think that would be fair. Where, how that would look, and that would be interesting to keep in like our parking lot as this goes down the road, to have a discussion as a board of what that might look like. Thanks for the presentation. It was interesting.
Any other questions for Ms. Miga? I'll just highlight on something you touched on, this is the very beginning of the process, right? We had a group at Monroe County School Boards that met with Regent Hale last week, and one of his observations is there's a lot of what in here, and it's less how. So something to keep in mind is, as they digested at the Regents, he said that they still have many questions to be answered. They only had an opportunity to ask one or two questions each as this was rolled out. So there's going to be a lot of back and forth, I think, before we see something concrete.
And that's what I shared in email with the 712 cabinets today, and just really also celebrated the fact that I think a lot of the work we're already doing is aligned to a lot of these recommendations. So I feel like we're in a great position to, you know, continue what we're doing, but have this in mind as well.
I'm just curious, what are the three diplomas that we offer now?
Should be local Regents and Regents with advanced designation.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mrs. Miga, for that informative update. Next is report of leadership staff personnel, and this is the first read of the personnel agenda, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Mepres, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you. So tonight, for first read for anticipated approval on December 1st, we have the resignation of certified staff members of a teaching assistant, for our classified staff members, a youth assistant, school nurse, events coordinator, and Eagles care program worker. We have a change in employment status of a substitute food service helper to cook and a personnel support clerk to guidance clerk. We have the appointments of a, for certified teachers and elementary teacher, certified teaching assistants, we have two full-time teaching assistants. Our classified staff, a teacher aide, and our PRDM employees of a food service substitute, food service helper, and three Eagles care workers. We have the resignation of a security monitor and a recommendation for approval of extracurricular volunteers, we have six volunteers.
Okay. Give Mrs. Kramer any questions or comments? Excellent. So this is a first read, so if anything comes up, please reach out to Dr. Johnson. Next is personnel two, and this is a motion, may I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the personnel agenda dated December 7th, 2023, as recommended by the Super by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Connor, Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Kramer, would you like to introduce us?
Yeah, so tonight, we're looking for approval for an interim assistant principal at Dade Junior High School.
Yeah.
Of Mr. Steve Shakow.
Any questions or comments on that? All right, seem none, all those in favor? That is six of zero, Mrs. Lustig. Very exciting to welcome Mr. Shakow back to the district after a short, short retirement.
Sure. Just to share with the Board of Education and kind of the public here, so that'll be announced now that you've approved that recommendation. And over the course of the next couple of weeks, Mr. Shakow will plan some crossover days with Mr. DiMartino, so that first, he can kind of understand what's going on at Dade and the position at Dade, and then that'll allow Mr. DiMartino to spend some time over here to prepare for the transition. So you can just expect that, and I want to make sure that you are aware of that, but also the committee, that will be announced tonight. So we appreciate the proactive support.
Thank you very much. Next is extracurricular stipends, may I have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that the extracurricular stipends dated December 7th, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, may I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Bornavall, Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Kramer, any comments?
Yes, we just have some additional extracurriculars, they are in red, font red on your agenda sheet.
Any questions or comments on that? Seem none, all those in favor? That is six of zero, Mrs. Lustig. Next is winter coaching stipends, may I have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that the winter coaching stipends dated December 7th, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Connor, may I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Bornavall. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Kramer?
So tonight, for approval, we have one final winter coach, a boys' mod A basketball head coach this evening, and it is in red on your agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer, any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? That is six of zero, Mrs. Lustig. That will bring us to new business, and new business number one is fundraising presentation. Dr. Johnson?
Yes. So almost two years ago, we were confronted with a controversial issue that emerged from the community, that the Board of Education engaged in quite a deep conversation about how to navigate that, and so, which you did, and what that left for us was considering, how can we create a structure moving forward that would be sustainable if future issues arise? And also, to manage that issue moving forward, that particular issue. So last year, the Board of Education set a goal to create a pathway or that structure to do that, and looking within our framework, we have an appropriate policy around fundraising in the district, Policy 7450. So I was charged with working with our people to consider that policy, and what would be appropriate to add to that to manage controversial issues should they arise moving forward. And so this was something that we were able to take advantage of Mr. Miller in his current role as an administrator on special assignment, to really dig into that, study that, and pull some people together to draft that and go through the process. And so they did that, they presented the regulation back to our central office committee, our cabinet, and we reviewed that, and ultimately I did approve that as a superintendent. We felt it was important to bring that back to you, I made you aware of that, and it kept you updated, but just to formally make that presentation. So I wanna turn it over to Mr. Miller, and it's also a very special night, because this may be, we have one meeting left, Mr. Miller's final presentation to the Board of Education.
I remember a time when this, thank you, Dr. Johnson, but I remember a time when this sport coat fit a lot better than it currently does. So first of all, thank you very much for that introduction, and it was certainly, it's certainly a privilege to be here before you this evening to present the work of this great committee. Really came together throughout the course of this fall to examine this, take a look at what does the policy consist of, examine some samples from around different districts, really taking a look at that. So first of all, I really wanted to thank, thank this group, and you'll see, it's really a really great horizontal and vertical representation of our school staff across, they came together, we had some great meetings and great discussions relative to, hey, what's the policy, and then what's a regulation that supports that? So we really got together and had some really great meetings and some discussions, and first of all, in order to do so, we needed to start off with the board policy, 7450, and take a look at it. Pulled together in preparation for those meetings, some samples from neighboring school districts and districts around the region, and one of the things that the group really came to was that, probably think the same author probably wrote many of these policies at the same time. So the policy stood alone, the policy stands as it is, certainly, but the regulation made a couple of tweaks to the regulation as we walked through it. Right now, the regulation, or just before, the regulation really looked like this, and the only change here that the committee had recommended was to add New York State law. Mr. Brennan doesn't just make up these procedures and protocols in terms of accounting in the business office, but it's really backed up by, I mean, everything that he does is governed by New York State law. So in that highlight, you'll see, that was the only change that occurred there. One of the other things that's critical through this was, we wanted to look through it from the lens of that DEI, our DEI policy, to make sure that it doesn't limit in any way, but really is totally inclusive and supportive of each and every, every child that we have. So you'll see some specific language that was added to it. So there's a component that's a, really a further criteria, so you'll see, first and foremost, is we wanted anybody considering doing a fundraising, a club and activity, to really, first and foremost, must be in alignment with our district DEI policy, 3440, along with a number of other policies that really connect to fundraising. Additionally, student organizations or clubs cannot crowdsource, which was a new learning piece for me in terms of what is, what is crowdsourcing? Didn't know that beforehand, but what it does is, we'd lose control over ensuring that each and every cent goes to our students or to our students' clubs. So it breaks out of those rules of New York State and good auditing rules, so making certain that money goes to our, to our kids. Additionally, online fundraisers that would require school credentials to be utilized, because oftentimes that requires a student to utilize a wraparound or a third-party agreement or click, you can't do that under EdLaw 2D in terms of making certain, you're protecting students' PII. So we didn't want that to have happened. And then at number nine, certainly going back to that, all means all. At no time shall a student's participation in a curricular or co-curricular program be contingent upon such sales or fees. So we're gonna provide those opportunities, we'll find a way to make that happen for each and every child. So one of the things the committee, and we were really, we got caught up as we, in the discussion and those pieces, and we really, the committee would have revamped, and we really wanted to dive in and do a really good job with this, and they would have revamped every piece of it. And we needed to come to a realization, we came to it, that fundraising isn't broken in this district, but what happens when a thing becomes a thing? In other words, when there is a controversy out there, or someone has an objection to something that's out there. Now, if you think back, about a year ago, the good Dr. Farrell had led a group of people through and came up with Regulation 8310, which is an opportunity for someone to voice opinion in relation to non-textbook-related materials, and a good system and a process upon which to examine that issue. So we had a great model to utilize. One of the first things was to create what we were initially calling a CFA, but it's a common formative assessment, so we had to put the form on there. So we created a CFAF. So if at any time someone in the school community would have an objection with a particular fundraiser that was occurring, they could fill out this form, and this really models that citizen's request for text, reconsideration of materials, this form from that policy 8310, okay? And then this would be submitted. Now, certainly, one of the things here is our leadership staff has a great ability, and our professionals, our teachers, our club advisors have a great ability to work with people, and oftentimes come to, hey, I've got an objection with this. Well, did we talk to the coach? Did we talk to the club advisor? Did you talk to the building principal? So here is, first of all, they could certainly fill this form out, but first of all, what does that process and what does that look like? So I'm gonna give you just a pause, this piece is really when a controversial fundraising activity were to come up. And I'm gonna pause for a moment and allow you an opportunity to just read through the steps that they take, which really mirror that textbook piece. individual involved, trying to get clarity around what that is. If you're not satisfied, if an individual wouldn't be satisfied at that point, they'd have the form. At that point, the superintendent would appoint a committee to examine and follow the outline in, under three, A, B, and C, number four, and then come up with a recommendation or a report based upon their findings, is to one of three things, halt the activity, continue the activity with stated modifications or adjustments, or maintain the activity and continue it. The good Dr. Johnson would receive that recommendation from this committee, provide them with a written report, file a copy in the school administrative offices, and then the superintendent's decision would be written in writing to the complain or the appropriate parties. So with that, real good solid system, should or if and when a controversy would have come up. So to highlight, updates to the regulations, including real specific language tied to Policy 3440, language to ensure that, language to prohibit crowdsourced fundraising, a process for if and when a controversy were to come up. And then lastly, was the creation of the controversial fundraising form itself. So with that, I would say, if there's any questions, comments, extend a thank you. And again, my hat goes off for the discussion that that committee had in relation to this. So really some good work there by the group.
Questions or comments for Ms. Miller?
I just appreciate the consistency in process, that, you know, we have a materials process in place, this doesn't deviate very much from that, so I think there's, you know, the commonality in the process makes it easy to understand. There was a information exchange committee meeting around the challenging of materials, and one of the forms they had was, did you actually read the book that you're complaining about? So I like having the questions on this form, did you discuss it with the appropriate individual in the district, what are your specific concerns about it? So it allows, makes people get a little bit deeper in their articulation versus the, I just don't like that.
Right, Mr. Sullivan, thank you for that, and there's a, there's a spot right there in the number nine for them to
Yep.
Put that down, you know? So thank you for that, yeah, it's important.
Thanks for the work, just a couple of questions on, so someone has an objections to a fundraising activity or a fundraising event at some place, and it's deemed to be controversial or halted. How does a group or a organization or a business get deemed to be allowed to do that? What's the, we talk about our DAI, so let's just say, I'm gonna talk about the 800-pound girl in the room, right? There was a Chick-fil-A controversy, okay? We dealt that. The question is, is, and the board at that time made a decision that that specific business didn't align with some of the ideas and of what we would consider to be, how do I want to say, a good fundraising activity, okay? So that was not allowed. So now the question is, how do we, how does that business or anything re, say, well, we think that we have, we are complying with the policy? So there's a form for the controversy, and now there's a controversy and it's deemed to be inappropriate, how do you measure that or see that, maybe that they've come into compliance? Maybe there was something wrong, and now they've come into compliance. Do we just file another fundraising form?
So this was something that we talked about, and I think as we described that, you know, the, the, the process is really set up to review within the context of our community, and so that's why it's very important that we pull together this multidisciplinary team, similar to what we do with instructional materials. And I think, you know, a way to look at it, if we consider compliance, it may just be, what's the right way, what I, I guess what I would say is, I'm not sure that compliance would be the right way to categorize that, to maybe frame it, John. Perhaps, again, like, just controversial might be, so it's controversial, and we talked about that a lot with the board, I mean, we'll just call it what it is in the, in the regulation, right? And so it's controversial at that time. And so one of the requirements, when they make the recommendation to me, is a timeline for review, okay? And so for an existing issue that's on the table right now, now that we have this structure, it would make sense for us to engage that, to review that, and to recommend, make a recommendation that includes a timeline for that review, for that particular issue. And then moving forward, right from the onset of a complaint, that would be a requirement of the regulation, so that there, so that that's built in moving forward, and it's not left, I think, to what you're pointing is, kind of dangling, right?
Yeah, I think it's important to outline that maybe in the regulation, that
Right.
The recommendation to the superintendent
That's fair, could really spell that out, because we talked about that, yeah.
Of review at some future point, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah, that, that, that makes sense, we can make that more clear in the regulation.
And then, so this is, obviously talks a lot about our, our district and activities, what about booster clubs that are not part of the district? And what about organizations that are not fully part of the district, but yet fundraise on behalf of the district?
So if you go back to the language, it starts with the policy, and I'll just read that. So fundraising projects in which students sell merchandise, provide services, or in which ways solicit money for school activities may be sponsored by school organizations in accordance with regulation. So again, it kind of captures school organizations, and we talked about that through the process over the last couple of years. Now, if you go to the regulation at the top, and this was existing language in the regulation, I'll read the, kind of the heading of that, it says, student clubs, organizations, parent guardian organizations, community organizations, professional associations, and/or individuals are permitted to conduct fundraising activities pursuant to these and other applicable Board of Education policies, administrative regulations, and other procedures. So by nature of what was existing, they would, they would be expected to align with these.
Thanks for
Yeah, I mean, that was, yeah.
That, that answers my question, I just want I just wanted to know how, how.
Yeah. That, that part was existing.
And then if they don't, so there's controversial. What happens if they don't follow the policies?
Well, that's a great question, John. And we go through a process of investigating that. That, that will be a very delicate process. And we face those, right? And we've had those conversations here. And so I don't have a direct answer for you with that, because it's not spelled out with this, but we would engage in that process to course correct. And what would be, what would, what would that look like? And what would be some of the expectations along the way?
I noticed on the regulation, it does just say fundraising by students.
Yep.
So what if it's an organization that's not using students to actually do fundraising? Like, then that thing would apply to them?
Well, again, it, it talks about maybe sponsored by school organizations. And that's where, Mr. Connor, I look at the regulation, and that's where the language is really expanded upon and, I believe, clarified, where it does talk about these other organizations and how, in accordance with this regulation, they're pursuant to do these things.
Okay. Yeah, it says it down here on number six.
Right.
Is there any value or even consideration to some type of a timeline? What would stop a parent from seeing an advertisement for a fundraising event this evening and reaching out to the district and saying, this is a super controversial issue?
I do have a thought.
That a lot of time and energy goes into planning these events, and at some point in time, there, I would imagine, there's a, a point of no return. Either a commitment to the vendor, or, man, this is seventy-five percent of our funding for the year, and we're turning it off a week before we need to review it. How do we handle those types of situations?
Right. And so I think, similar to our instructional materials, the example that Mr. Miller shared was, there was, there was, we've had experiences where there was a poster up in the classroom. You know, a lot of times, these are reactionary. And so if there's a fundraising event that has either occurred or is planned to occur, that will continue, and we will convene this committee, go through the process. And then moving forward, once we make that decision, but to your point, and I would say that this reflects the process we went through in the last two years, there were things that happened. There were fundraisers that were done as we went through the process. And once the board had made a decision on that, then we course corrected. Then we, right? Then we intervened. So that would be the process, we would mirror that process moving forward.
And then, I know what we used to, and I think back to, like, when we had to go to the, uh, started budgets, James, when we had, we had, the board had set up at that time, kind of a, a form that was put in from the business office, I think it was, directly James, if I'm wrong, but, when fundraising activities happen. And it kind of kept, kept track of it on a calendar, so obviously, we didn't, like, I'll use card washers. So we didn't have, like, three card washers on the same day, you know? They did, it wasn't.
Still do that.
I'm saying, okay, so that.
It still happens.
And is that one of the policies? I can't remember all the policies. Is that one of the policies recommended, or should we put in there in a note in the policy, and maybe in policy, and this is a board question, because we do a policy, not the regulation, so thank you for sharing this with us, is that we should also remind people, you should use, I don't, Form nineteen-ten, whatever it is, that that should be filled out too. Do you understand what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
So people, people go and read the policy, and they're like, okay, we can, it sounds like we can do this, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna sell painted rocks, right? And, but then it says, you know, by the way, you've got to fill out Form nineteen-ten and submit it to the business office.
And, Mr. Ve, you may be referencing a form that is in process, so like, the club advisor utilizes, and it's called a request for fundraising form. So then that goes through the appropriate building-level administration for approval, and that lays it out. And there's systems there that take a look at making sure that we're not all going to CAMs on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Right.
Yep.
And there's a position, there's a stipulated position that.
So, but we also talk in this about groups that aren't curriculum or school-based. Should we make that a valid form, so we also know what's going on out there? I'm just asking.
So I know with athletics, that exists, and they do run through our Office of Athletics. But it's more for the scheduling piece. It hasn't necessarily been for approval, although I think through this process, there was varied opinions on that. Some of the associated organizations looked at that as an approval process. And when we looked at it, the purpose of that was really coordinating the scheduling. So that's an, that's an opportunity as well to further clarify.
Thanks for, Aaron, yours, and Chuck's, the team's work. This has been a long, time coming. The board appreciates the regulations. A lot of times, we don't get into the regulations. So Aaron, thank you for how you took the policy that we put together, and then, so we understand, because these can be controversial issues, that we can get a lot of questions on. And it's kind of to know, hey, there is a process. If you work through the principal. Like, we tell that most parents, if they, or someone has a problem, go to the closest person, teacher, principal, you know, work your way up. Don't come into the board, because we're going to, we're going to listen to you, but a lot of times, it's got to start at the local level move up.
Absolutely.
So thank you for sharing this with us. It's helpful to know the process behind the policies. And it's thoughtful, and it's, it's, like Matt said, it's really aligned when we have instructional questions, right? So again, that's kind of our big rock, like, alignment across things. So again, we're implementing our strategic plan thoughts even in this, so thank you.
Thank you.
I've come to learn how, thank, thank you all for your thoughtfulness, and I come to learn that CAMs no longer exist.
Yes. Well, they still.
Thanks for your time.
It's just not here.
It's not here.
The French report, there's one?
That, that went close, too.
Certainly be a Montal.
I do just want to take a moment, and it was kind of strategic, Chuck, here, because, you know, he's been an extremely dedicated and committed presence in the district. And I think, you know, in my time here, the majority of that time, I've worked with him in this position of administrator on a special assignment. And I just want to thank you for flexibility. The, I mean, the teamwork is kind of your calling card, and the way that, in a moment's notice, you'll jump in, and regardless of the level of the task, you really dig in and provide support and collaboration, as evidenced by this. And so I know we're going to be celebrating you tomorrow with a social event with staff, but I felt like this was just at least a moment to formally recognize you and thank you for your years of service and the many, 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 many contributions that you've made to the district and community here at West Rarona Quay, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been an incredible. It's been an incredible place to be for a long time, it's home.
It's hidden mine for special time.
Thank you.
I have a present.
Yeah, I have a little one. So thank you, and thank you for that.
Thank you for this presentation, Chuck, and, and everything you've done for the district. We wish you all the best in retirement. We'll see if we can find a reason to bring you into our next board meeting.
Well, I very carefully, very carefully navigate this at home, because the good missus made it very clear to me that there's no way she's getting up and going to work if I'm not. So gotta find something to do.
Inefficient guy.
Next, under our new business is policy review. We have quite a few policies, don't we, Dr. Johnson?
We do. So we've been very busy, a lot of different ways, but I think most of these reflect the work of our policy committee. So I want to turn over to Mrs. Kramer, because she's been chairing that process.
So the policies for review and some revisions for the first read this evening are from our multi-year policy review committee. Just some brief background of the work that the committee has, has done as we reviewed these policies, is we really engaged first in unpacking our district DEI policy, as well as the New York State Culture and Responsive and Sustaining Framework, and also a resource from Monroe One Bosses, which is a style guide for inclusive communication. So we took that information to really define what is our lens that we're looking at policy from, with a focus on making sure our policies are accessible, they represent our community, and are equitable. So some of the things that really came out of the discussion and unpacking the documents are things of even looking at formatting to make sure that that creates our documents to be accessible, looking at person-first language, really understanding our diverse family formations, and avoiding gender-specific terms, as well as avoiding some coded language that might have some underlying nuances that really might take groups of people or individuals and not make them part of our community. So as we looked at that, we do have some policies with some revisions for your review. We did look at policies eleven-ten, eleven-twenty, eleven-thirty, thirteen-ten, thirteen-twenty, and thirteen-thirty in there. We have no recommended revisions for those policies, but wanted to make a note that we have looked at those. So for policy twelve-ten, which is the Board of Ed member qualifications, that has been updated with gender pronouns. Policy twelve-twenty, which is Board of Ed members' nomination and election, that has been updated for, in looking at gender pronouns, we clarified some language. So for example, just some clarity around what's that last filing, petition filing, and to like, that option of a ballot box. So some other things connected to more recent guidance with elections. Policy twelve-thirty, reporting of expenditures and contributions, has been updated with gender pronouns, as well as some spaces and underlying and, or bolding, so that we could make that more accessible for people as they're reading them to identify pieces. Policy twelve-forty, resignations and dismissal, has been updated with gender pronouns. The word competent has been replaced with the word qualified, and that really matches on policy. And again, that goes back to making sure that we have some inclusive language. Policy twelve-fifty, legal qualifications of voters at school district meetings, has been updated with gender pronouns. Policy twelve-fifty-one, proof of residency, has been updated with gender pronouns. Policy twelve-sixty, submission of questions and propositions at the annual meeting and election and special district meetings, has been formatted and revised to include spacing for accessibility, and the word machine has been replaced with ballot. And policy twelve-seventy, absentee ballots, has been updated with gender pronouns and some formatting and spacing and titles for added accessibility. So also, a big shout out to Jenna for her work to update these and have those ready for us. And then, did you answer any questions?
Just a general question. Thank you for the review. I know each year, we try to review, like, we, obviously, if something comes up in that policy, or if a law changes, you know, maybe we update. But, and I, Aaron, I think we talked about this as a board, and, you know, we kind of had, like, in my mind, this is the way I think it, I think we settled on, but I just want to make sure. So like, every three years, we kind of should roll through the policy manual. Is that still kind of what we're trying to do?
So that's a great conversation. It's whatever, how, looking at the best practice, when I came on board, that was what the board had established. It was, it took a little bit longer. I think it took a little over four years.
The first year, the first time, because it was.
Right. Exactly. Yep. And so this is an opportunity for us to be going through every policy again in that manner. And then moving forward, it's really a conversation with you as to, you know, whether or not we're going to continue to proceed with that, with that cycle.
I, myself, I think it's a good cycle. Because a board member's term is three years. So, I mean, why we, we look at policy and we, we read, I could tell you, we don't read every policy the first day you come on the board, right? But you, you do learn them, and you do peruse them. But it is a chance for a board member who is on the board for three years to kind of get through that policy manual in a, to get some of those policies that we don't normally cover every, because there's law changes or whatever. So I was just wondering, and maybe my other board members, is, does that sound like a plan or something that, and we don't have to decide tonight, I'm just saying, maybe a workshop, maybe Matt, but, I think that's, I look at the three-year cycle, and, you know, we have, I look at like, one thousand through nine thousand policies, right, Michelle? You just cut them up into threes. And I look for input from you, Aaron, as to, you know, recommending us policy, or what might that look like in general, since you help with that too. So just interesting to.
Yeah. Now that we have a mechanism, obviously, I think as folks are experiencing the idea of a policy committee, because we hadn't had that prior, right? We had a policy service. We have a policy service, and then we had a consultant that we worked with to help to review those. So this is, this is kind of new to us, and I think that's part of the conversation moving forward. Obviously, like you had said, the first time we went through it, five-plus years ago, we were reviewing policies that.
Nineteen-eighty-eight.
Yeah, right? So they, they had been touched ad hoc, as laws and regulations change, right? And so now, if the board were to continue with this commitment, it ensures that they're touched on a regular basis, not only by you, but by our team in the district as well. But it's just making that commitment of resources and time.
Well, and that's what, that's where I would be interested. That's why I'm not asking, we'll leave that topic at our, if we're going to have the retreat.
Throw it down.
Because I don't want to tax the district staff too much. So if it is four years or five years, that's fine. I think it's good to go set eight. Because we did find that some policies went, while there's nothing wrong with the policies when we looked at them, there was a long time before it kind of circled to the board again.
Right. Yep. It's okay.
Question on the accessibility piece. If I go to the district website, Board of Education policies, it brings us to board docs where the policies are housed. Our district website allows families to choose language. Board docs is not. Is there a plugin for board docs, or perhaps some other way that we could make policies accessible, translatable?
That's a great question. That came up through the process, and that's really working with board docs. And I'm surprised that they haven't initiated action on that, but that's something through this process, we'll continue to pursue it. Either working with them to do it through their platform, or we'll need to figure out how to offer that independently.
Google translator or something.
Yeah. So that's an excellent point that was talked about with the, we're like, hey, wait a minute here. We're talking about this, and like, the way that they're archived, and it limits its accessibility.
Who's our administrator for board docs?
Maybe. There's a person in our district, too.
Well, I know Matt, like, for super, Matt's kind of, board president is always the, I don't want to say keeper, but they're the, I call it administrator, right? They have the.
Yep. The district clerk.
The, the desk, if they have, have that or something?
Yep.
Maybe you're.
Yep.
Because if they're not, then we'll, let's try to make a plan, like, reset that, that there's.
Exactly.
I know there's a lot of problems out there to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the policy review? So these are first reads. We anticipate voting on them on the twenty-first. Thank you again, Mrs. Kramer and the policy committee, for all of the work there. This is exciting to see this come to fruition after we've been talking about it for a while. Next is the consent agenda. May I have the recommended resolution?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Rarona Quay Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes I-two through I-nine.
May I have a motion? Mr. Connor, thank you. May I have a second? Mrs. Barbara Corwin. Tonight on the consent agenda is recommendations of the committee on special education, vote worker approval, surplus equipment, surplus electronics.
worker approval, surplus equipment, surplus electronics, textbooks, textbook approval, Fry Bread, A Native American Family Story, textbook approval, Kipanumak, We At Cheems Thanksgiving Story, textbook approval, Go Show the World, A Celebration of Indigenous Heroes, and revised policy approval of policies 7420 and 7522. Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for separate discussion? Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed to vote on separately? Any questions or comments on the consent agenda as a whole? Jake, do we have any VCRs left after this?
I hope not.
You better keep it.
There's a lot of VCRs.
You better keep it.
You're gonna keep it in the bottom file drawer cabinet.
I don't think anybody's filing any more.
When James comes out with it, says, I need to know what's on his table.
Just like vinyl came back, VCRs will come back.
Set players.
All right. With no discussion on the consent agenda, all those in favor. That is 6-0, Ms. Lustig. And that brings us to future meetings. When will we have future meetings?
Well, we have our special district meeting next Tuesday, December 12. Polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at district office. We have an audit committee meeting on December 21st at 6:00 p.m. at district office, followed by a business meeting at 7:00. And we will have a study session on January 4th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at Cobra.
I have that last one in my calendar as Rogers, I think we switched those, so you might want to double check your calendars as well.
Where is that one?
Cobra.
Thank you. We're gonna check that.
And next is executive session. Is there a reason to go into executive sessions, Mike?
Yes, there is, to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
The streak is broken. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Connor. May I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Bornival. All those in favor. That is 6-0, Ms. Lustig. We will stand adjourned in executive session. We thank you everyone for a great meeting.